We're going to start the August 26, 2014 zoning board meeting. It's being recorded by LCAT for the folks at home, our director, Robin McDonald. Is there anybody else recording? And if so, name and affiliation.
Uh, Chris Goodrow.
Okay, thank you. First up, we're going to discuss requests for signage. St. Paul Lutheran Church, 181 Elm Street.
Town of East Long Meadows, signed permit application dated August 18, 2014. Name of business is St. Paul Lutheran Church, 181 Elm Street. Property owners, name and address, St. Paul Lutheran Church, same address. Telephone numbers are listed here. And the nearest intersection is Elm Street and Maple Shade Avenue. The sign is 41 square feet, single-faced. It will be freestanding. It will not be attached to the building. Height above the ground is 96 inches. Projection is not applicable. Setback from property line is 30 and 1/2 feet. And then there's another dimension of 38 feet, so it must be front and back. It's a corner lot, okay? Distance to top of sign is not applicable. It's not illuminated. Sign is permanent. Let's see, attach this. Total number of existing signs are two, and they're listed here. Total number of proposed signs is two. Existing freestanding sign will be replaced with a new sign, which will be 41 square feet. The applicant is St. Paul Lutheran Church. It is signed. The estimated cost is $8,000, and sign affidavit is attached. So that's the picture of the sign.
I don't even tell the criteria. You want to... Do you want any comments out there? Anybody have any?
Single-sided, right?
They have the big rock that says...
Is it going to go in the same spot?
Yes.
Can you get rid of the rock?
Yes.
Oh, the rock goes away?
No, they... Someone's...
I'll take the rock.
Say, I take the rock, too. It's a nice rock.
Yeah.
I'll take that rock.
I got huge slather of redstone on my house.
Yeah, everybody wants to rock.
Get a couple out of my head.
What are we going to do now? You've got five guys who wants to rock.
Let's split it. I make a motion to approve the sign.
Let's break it up into gravel.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have Richard Turnberg to discuss the support of the board for possible zoning bylaw change. Mr. Turnberg.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Want to grab a chair?
Yeah, if you want to grab a chair.
Could I just take one sec?
Certainly.
I just want to introduce you to this...
Oh, he did introduce himself.
Goodrow?
Yes.
This is the planning board. I'm not sure if he introduced himself to everybody.
I'll see you.
This is Ty Richard.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Michael Kirk.
Good to meet you.
Sandro, Mesia.
Welcome aboard.
Do you have a card? Oh, I don't have a card yet. Next time you kind of... Yeah, it's only my third week. They stopped.
Unbelievable. Third week? One problem at a time. Right now, they'd be working on a retirement plan. You have Ty Richards.
How are you? Good.
Good. Good. Good.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come here tonight.
Certainly.
Thank you, Robin, for setting this up. You know, in this world with all the problems in the world, and probably even in this town, this seems a little trivial, the problem I have here. But what I want to do is I was going to get... Try to get the 100 signatures to have a warrant put on the... An article, put in the town warrant. But I was on vacation last week, and I found it quite difficult to get 100 signatures. Especially if you start stopping to explain everything to everybody from the beginning. So what I want to do is I want to see if you people could, if you agree with what I'm saying here, and maybe you can clarify something in case I'm missing something or I'm not getting this. You people could probably sponsor this or put this on the town warrant, this article.
Yeah, it would take some discussion, public hearings. There are certainly some, you know, procedures that need to be followed.
Yeah, well, I was told either the selectmen or the board of... The planning board could put this on, and I wouldn't have to get the 100 signatures.
Okay.
You know, I could if I got 100, but I'd have to wait for the annual town meeting. What this comes down to simply is this. On your bylaw 3.093, in part, it states a minimum area of lot shall be 10,000 square feet per horse. This has to do with horses. I have a situation next door to me, and I've been to the selectmen, Board of Health, and all that. And what I want to do is if you agree...
Well, if I may interrupt you, and what did they tell you?
Excuse me?
And what did those boards tell you?
Well, they went up there and looked at it as a... From a health point, point of view, as far as horse feces and bugs and things like that that horses naturally attract.
Okay.
But I'm interested in just changing the zoning bylaw by adding two words. And I'm going to repeat that again. It says here, in part, "A minimum area of lot shall be 10,000 square feet per horse." And all I want to do is add you 10,000 square feet of open space per horse. Add the two words, "open space." Because let's face it, a 10,000-square-foot lot is less than a quarter of an acre. And that includes, on that 10,000-square-foot lot that you're allowed to have horses, includes your house, your garage, your tool shed, your swimming pool, your garden, probably any other structure, or vehicles or boats that park in the property. Now, I'm just saying that that's... In my situation, the people next door to me have less than 3/4 of an acre. They started off with one horse, they went to two horses, then they went to three horses. And I think combined, the area that those horses have to roam in is probably less than 10,000 square feet, never mind 30,000.
Okay.
They have a total property there of 31,000... The total property, according to records in the Sessions office, is 31,967 square feet.
All right, so they're legally entitled to three horses.
So they have three horses. They've got barely enough for three horses.
Okay.
According to the... And I'm saying realistically, you don't want the horses in your house, you don't want them in your garage, you don't want your horses in your tool shed, you don't want the horses in your swimming pool, and you sure as hell don't want them walking through your garden. So I think that this law as exists would be more clear if you said 10,000 square feet of open space. Horses are a range animal. They like to run, they like to kick up their heels.
Okay.
The situation I have started out as... I've been there in my house for 43 years. I've been in town all my life. The people next door have been there for seven years. They started off with one horse, which I, you know, I couldn't say anything about it, but it was a nice horse, a beautiful horse. Then they got two, then they got three. And I think it would be basically a suspension of reality or suspension of logic to think that horses don't smell. You know, I mean, I've done some study, and I've looked at the different universities, the agriculture departments of the University of Maine, New Hampshire, Montana, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Iowa, Kentucky, Kansas, and a few other ones. They're... The universities, agriculture departments, and they give you facts on horses. If the average 1,000 to 50... The 1,000 to 1,200-pound horse basically generates about 50 pounds of feces a day. And they poop, if you will, for better word, eight to 10 times a day, or every three to four hours. Now, to think that this, I could say, is a suspension of reality, realize that this doesn't smell, and under certain climatic conditions, such as the shift in wind, or moderate to heavy rainstorms, the horse feces, along with the horse urine, generates, you know, quite a mess, you know? And in certain parts of the property, it puddles, and it stays there for a few days.
Okay.
And again, at the same time, it generates horse flies, house flies, gnats, fleas, mosquitoes, and a thing called the stable flies. It's a scientific name for it. The doctor probably knows what that means. But they bite, and their bite is quite painful. And I've had them all around, and it tells you right... It says it usually bites you about the ankles, and I could show you my ankles where, over the years, I've been to my doctor, I've even been to a dermatologist on this, because, you know, the flies and the butt, what the hell are they, these stable flies? Like I said, the bite is painful, and it actually takes a little hunk out of your skin. And along after going through the feces and then biting you, it can cause an infection, which I had one time where I had to go to a dermatologist. Took quite a good to heal it. So what I'm saying is, anybody in this town who has 10,000 square feet, in which I did some checking, like, for example, I know some friends behind the high school over there, a lot of those lots are exactly... Matter of fact, the building inspector here in town here, the zoning... His lot is exactly 10,000 square feet. He could basically own a horse. Now, he doesn't want a horse, but he could. A lot of these nice, beautiful developments with lots of 10,000 square feet, they could own a horse. And, you know, when I say it's a person, they should stop and think that more important, their neighbors could own a horse. So if somebody decided to relive their days of youth and wanted to become Annie Oakley or Roy Rogers again, and they got a horse, they're going to have this problem of the smell that is generated by a horse, as well as the bugs. And, you know, in my yard, I've been there 43 years, I used to have peccocks in my backyard and eat outside occasionally. My wife and my sister-in-law, who lives next door, they just can't stand the horse smell. I grew up on a farm. So up until the time I was young, till the time I was 15-years-old, I had a horse. And... But we had plenty of acreage for the horses to roam around in, so there was no problem there. So I mean, it's not that I don't like horses, but I think, you know, to put three horses in a small area like that, I mean, even though they're within the zoning bylaws it is now, I think if we were to open space, they would probably be allowed to have two horses there. And like I say, there again, on all these other developments down where these nice, beautiful homes are, if somebody got a horse, they could certainly smell up the neighborhood. Now, one of the things I've... You know, I had... Came down to see that selectmen, Board of Health, I try to do it very discreetly, because I didn't want to cause any problems to neighbors, I didn't want it to... I wanted to see what my rights were, as far as the smelling and the bugs and things. And I wanted to keep it kind of under the thing, you know? I'm not worried about the guy. I just said, why cause it? Well, sure, hell's happened, they went up there, and it all come out, and they... Your neighbor complained about the horse, and so what happened is exactly what I didn't want to happen. They got all upset and started calling me every name in the book. Like, I didn't have a right to question the smell and the bugs and things that were biting the hell out of me, you know?
Right.
And then they decided they were going to put the house up for sale. They could even get me or something. I don't know. But... And if you read how they... The first part of their for-sale article, if you read what it says, instead of saying we have a house here with four bedrooms and two baths, they go right into say it's an already-built mini-farm for you, suitable for three horses, you see that, Mike? And so it's almost like, we're going to get this guy. So they're... Now, the house was built in 1951, and prior to these people moving in there, nope, the people that lived before never had any animals at all. I don't even think they had a cat or a dog. So now we got... You had three horses here. I've had letters here that Mr. Gorman sent them about picking up the... You know, just back in the spring, Gary Turnberg went in there, and he took six loads of... Six big loads of his dumpster of horse manure out of there. Six monsters, big truckload, so you know Gary.
Yep.
And now the order and condition that Gorman's... Mr. Gorman sent it for him is that they have to take that out of there every three months, and they're supposed to put lime over it, daily put lime over it. Pick up the horse feces every day, put it in the pile, put lime... Put a tarup over it.
All right.
Yeah, they're not doing it.
So if I may interrupt you, so the selectmen or Mr. Gorman has suggested this and asked them to do this?
Yeah.
And they've agreed to it?
They've agreed to it. They said they're doing it. He even told me letters, everything that's fallen into place, they're doing it right. Well, I live there every day. They spot-check it periodically.
Okay.
I mean, to me, if I know you're coming, Mike, I'm going to go out there and...
Right. I mean, I can't speak on...
I just went up there today, and there's at least six, you know, right? And my... Just to make it... My barn is just 20 feet away from there.
Okay.
The second thing is, the guy built a second corral. When he got the third horse, he built a second corral, which is 40 feet from my bedroom window.
Okay.
You know, at nighttime, you know?
Yep.
A little window, you know? And like I said, you'd be crazy to think that horse feces doesn't smell. So what I want you to do, if you will, for me, put this on the... The... As an article to the town warrant, have it come up at the special town meeting that they're going to have here on the 27th of October. Or else I got to wait and get a... 10 signatures I can get for the annual town meeting.
Right, regular meeting.
But I mean, I just want to get this done, because as you can see, the thing I just gave you, they're trying to sell their house, and I'm going to see that the next person doesn't come in here and put things... He can put three horses in it, in effect, you know what I mean? Have three horses in there. But anyways, I have... If you put that on a warrant, and somebody just get up and say that this is what you want to do, you want to change the zoning bylaw, to read the two words I said, "open space," just insert those two words, "open space," instead of leaving like it is, I will get up and speak on it to behalf, and I will get up and try to convince the audience to support it.
A few things I can share with you. As a board, we're going to look at things that are going to benefit the whole community, not saying that this won't. Right now, this is the first, I think, any of us are hearing about it. You've already told me that you've been to the selectmen and the Board of Health, and they're trying to correct the issue. I feel a little apprehensive of jumping in after the fact, after they've already stepped in. Those are only my opinions. I'm certainly going to ask my other board members.
Well, I'm not asking you to conflict with those people. I'm asking you to take this zoning law and read it to me, and tell me if I'm missing something, or does that make sense that 10,000 square feet... And I just got to say, a horse does not live in your house, it does not live in your barn or your pool or your garage or your tool shed. So I think that is... I'm saying 10,000 square feet of open space would be suitable for it. Matter of fact, my opinion, three horses on a property that's there now, my opinion, it borders on animal cruelty, because I was a horse. Like I said, we had plenty of them. My family had several horses when I was young, growing up. All I want you to do is see if you can put that on a warrant. It's up to the town people to vote for it, whether they're going to vote yes or no.
All right, well, I'm going to ask my fellow members. Anybody like to add in? Any comments, suggestions?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. I'm reading here, and it says here, "For stapling one horse, a lot must have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet of additional area for each additional horse." What do we mean by additional area? And does that mean that it already is supposed to be that, but it is not described very well? I mean, it kind of... It kind of looks to me like the intent is... Was originally to be 10,000 square feet of open space, because it says additional area. There's got to be a reason why that additional area language is in there, and it seems to me that...
What section are we looking at? I'm reading the...
Right here.
Wait, what? Can you give me the...
3.13?
3.13.
Yep.
3.1...
Section A?
I'm reading 3.093.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's under District A.
This implies... Just so I know, this implies that all AA, B, and C.
I don't have the 3.13.
All right, here we go. C, private stable. For stapling one horse.
George, it's the table for residential A, if you look all the way across.
315.
Yeah. If we start under land use classification, 3.093.
Yeah.
Private stable, not conducted for game. Business operations are prohibited. No more than four horses shall be kept on a single lot. A minimum area of lot shall be 10,000 square feet per horse. Now, what you were reading from is under District A. Once you get into District A, then that's under the comment for that.
Right. And if you look at B and double A, B and C, it probably says the same thing.
Right.
Yes.
And furthermore, it wouldn't be very practical if you had a 10,000-square-foot lot, and you had 7,000 square feet of buildings, because now you only have 3,000 square feet for a horse.
Right.
But the way it's written, that the lot... Minimum lot size for one horse is 10,000 square feet, and that's the whole lot size.
But if you look under...
Go ahead.
Page 3-15, George, in the individual districts, I'm just looking at residential C. That's what Ty is referring to, because it's specific to each...
It's under A as well.
Yeah.
A, B, C.
It's the same for all of them.
Yeah.
And, you know, the point is that as you...
Right.
As you add more horses, you actually have more space per horse, okay? Because that first 10,000, you know, would be where any structures on the site would be. And then the next 10,000 would presumably be, you know...
Okay, so putting that... Putting that comment aside, it still has an issue, though, if you have a quarter-acre lot, 10,000 square feet, and you have 7,000 square feet of buildings, you don't have very much room for a horse.
Lot coverage is only 25%.
You get lot coverage, it's only 25%.
25%.
So you only have 2,500 feet of buildings.
Okay, but...
So you're...
But my point is, you still don't have 10,000 square feet of open space for... Or available space for a horse to...
No, you get 7,500. But you don't... You know, just because someone has a horse and keeps it in their barn, doesn't mean that that's where they exercise that horse necessarily, okay? My concern with the change is that we have a lot of people in town who have horses, a lot more people than you might imagine, okay? And this will impact every one of those to a greater or lesser extent.
Would it be grandfathered?
Well, they would be grandfathered. If you change it, they would be grandfathered.
They would then have to...
At that point, then, it wouldn't help you at all.
It'd help if they had the house for sale, they're trying to sell it with the thought that...
But the grandfather would go to the property.
Grandfather would go to the property.
Goes to the property, not the owner.
No, doesn't it change when the property changes hands?
Only when the use changes.
Only in certain instances, and I think Elsba's about the only one.
Yeah.
I think the grandfather continues along with the property, unless it's discontinued for...
Right. It would be as of the date of town meeting.
Yes, it is.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
I'm just...
It would throw all of them to the back, yes.
So if the use is discontinued for two years, then it goes away.
Let me ask you this. Mr. Gorman wrote this letter that they're supposed to pick up the horse feces every day, spread lime down every day, and put a canvas over it. Would this apply to new owners, too, based on his... He's a health... I guess he's a chairman of the health.
That would be a question for Mr. Gorman, and if Mr. Gorman wants to travel that path, I think it would be up to, you know, Mr. Hill, your enforcement officer, if that's the path that Mr. Gorman has chosen. You know, if that's the path he's set forward, and, you know, Dan Hill, it's up to him to enforce that, I know, I've got to be honest with you, I don't see where this board really has a say in this.
Well, I'm just saying that there's a lot of people who have horses, George, and I think they have enough space. Obviously, we'd be also violating the zoning bylaw. If I don't...
If I... Can I just comment? As I say, there... This will impact a large number of folks in town, one way or another, whether they have to prove they're pre-existing, non-conforming, or in some other way. The other point I'd like to make is that... Well, two more. One, I know people who've had two and three horses on relatively small properties, okay? Ex-conservation commissioner that I worked with for many years, had three horses on... A lot on Greenwood Lane, okay? Which is not very big. Secondly, the issue seems to be one of sanitation and health, not really a zoning issue. It's a Board of Health issue. I have trouble trying to correct a single instance of a health issue with a change in the zoning bylaw. I mean, that's... I'd take it a bulldozer to dig a little hole in the ground. And I sympathize with you, but I think it's an issue of sanitation, it's not an issue of zoning.
Well, that too. And I'm just saying, again, I'm going to be myself. If you have 10,000 square feet in your nice neighborhoods, and somebody wants to have a horse, they can put a horse in there amongst a 7,000-square-foot home and everything else, really, and have very little land, as you said, and stink up the whole neighborhood and cause bugs and things like that.
Yeah.
I'm saying, you're not going to protect only me. I'm... I've got a situation here, that's why I'm here. There's probably... This could affect anybody at any time. I mean, like I said, it seems trivial to begin with, but this is why we're here, to discuss things that are bothering people, and hopefully maybe change them if they're right, right? I don't... Again, you've got a horse. Common sense tells you, the horse isn't going to live in the house, he's not going to be in a garage, he's not going to be in your pool. So what does the 10,000 square feet mean? Does that include all these other things, which don't make sense to me? It doesn't make sense to me that you would have... Allow that. I mean, I, you know, so I'm just saying, 10,000 square feet of open space, that's where a horse can roam, and that, you know...
To me, this...
So you don't want to do anything about it? Well, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, to me, this looks confusing, the way this is written, because for stapling one horse, a lot must have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet of additional area for each additional horse. I mean, this additional area is the two words that are throwing me off here in this.
And it... Not that I'm a genius, but it could be written incorrectly. You know, I think the intention was one horse per 10,000 square feet. I think that was the intention.
In your opinion, would a lot 13,000 square feet... Would a lot that's 13,000 square feet with a horse on it make all the difference?
Probably would. I mean, I'm just saying...
And the reason I'm asking is...
This is for me, you know, I mean...
We're talking...
The chance that these people sell that house, the chance of somebody buying it with three horses or two horses, even one horse, is very remote. I mean, you know...
Right.
Or else, maybe they're looking for that, you know? But I'm... Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm looking at not only myself here, so that the next person can come in and put, thinking, put three horses on there, you know, when he can only put two, say, for example, or else anybody else in the town who has a beautiful home and a nice neighborhood.
It's got them written wrong.
And somebody decides to get a horse.
Yeah, that way it needs to be corrected.
And somebody decides to get a horse and say, here, I'm getting a horse, and I like this. Put up with the smell, say-
But there's no-
It doesn't even make sense where it is here.
There's nothing ambiguous about it, ambiguous about it, I don't think. But-
It's an additional area.
Want to add anything?
No.
We have these debates in our, Ralph knows what I'm going to say, in these zoning review committee meetings, all the time.
So you don't want to change those, put two little words in there for me?
I, it's not-
For the town, not for me, for the town?
I think it would take more than one person with one horse to move a whole board, to be honest with you. And again, that's only my opinion.
Don't you, aren't you here to prevent problems from happening?
Yes, we are. But those bylaws were written in 1962.
I've, I've reviewed these bylaws over and over again, myself, when I'm 19, in late 80s, I was very actively involved in it, in the town here.
Okay.
So I, I'm quite familiar with it.
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, you know, the rest of the board members. Personally, I don't, I don't think it's something that the planning board, or I, I myself as a planning board member, want to push at town meeting.
What?
I don't want to bring it to town meeting as a planning board member. If you want to bring it, you're certainly welcome to. I'm going to, I'm going to ask my, you know, my fellow members if they're interested.
I'm, I'm not interested in the board sponsoring this amendment.
Okay, Ralph?
I'm not interested in the board sponsoring it.
Sandro?
I would agree.
I think it's confusing, but I'd rather have you go get the 100 signatures and, and present it yourself.
Does it still have to get approval by you to put on a warrant?
No, it doesn't. No, you're more than, you're free to bring it-
Can I ask you why you, why you think this is not-
We, 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 we have a choice of recommending it, it can be on the warrant, and if the town votes for it, whether we recommend it or not, if the town votes for it, that's what goes.
You know, there was an issue a while back with chickens. There was a, roosters, I'm sorry. I don't remember if we got behind it or not, but we didn't take a stand, because we wanted to let the voters have a shot. It was one neighbor complaining about one other neighbor, so we let it go to town meeting, and we let the powers that be decide that.
Well, if you sponsor this thing, so to speak, I mean, the people are still going to vote for it, if they got it, one way or the other.
Right.
So you don't want to do that for citizens?
I want to do it for all of the citizens, I don't want to do it for one.
You're doing it for all the citizens.
I think the only difference is that you would get the 100 signatures as opposed to not getting the 100 signatures. Isn't that the only difference?
What was that, sir?
Yeah, I, I think the difference would be that you would have to just get the 100 signatures.
I mean, the petition-
Well, I'm, I don't have time to do that.
The petition would demonstrate there's broad-based support for, for the change.
Correct.
Well, that's right, but I don't have, I was on vacation last week, I'm in New York, and I did, you know, like I said, every time you talk to somebody, ask for a signature, you feel right, I mean, I'm not going to sign something unless I know what it's for. But I try to even tell them, this is just to get it on a warrant, it's not to approve or disapprove of anything, it's just have the right to put it up there for the citizens of all.
Right, and I think if, if, you know, the five of us, you know, thought that was a, you know, a must-need thing, I think we would support it. And I'm going to give you, for instance, there's probably not a person in this town that doesn't have a right that they want to come here and have changed. But we can't act on impulse, we can't act on one person.
I know that, I told you.
So we're trying to be respectful, view the situation in the rest of the town.
Yeah. Well, what, this is, like I said, there's much bigger problems in the world in this town.
I agree.
I told you, it's kind of trivial, but this is what you're here for, to help the citizens of the town, and if they've got a problem, they come to you and see if you can help resolve it or not. I'm not, you know, ask you against your, your personal wishes.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in and speaking with us, I appreciate it. All right, next up, we have an A and R for Canterbury Circle and Chestnut Street, which is right in front of me. All right, this is, I think that you all remembered.
Yes. We know a lot.
So it's the Canterbury Circle, the foundation was put in with no permit, they didn't meet the prerequisites for the rear setback. The Aquabanken has since bought indoor traded land, I guess it looks like they're swapping some land, whether there's money involved, I don't know, to meet the required setback. So that would bring the house into conformity. Anybody have any comments?
I, I, I'm glad that they chose to take this route, and it-
As am I.
Gives us the setback that we feel we need.
Well, that's required.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's any question in anybody's mind.
And I, I think, as, as presented, it, it meets the requirements for the A and R, it's got the frontage, okay, required, it's got the lot size required, so I would move to endorse the A and R.
I would second that.
All right. Any more discussion? Absolutely, Ralph.
On Chestnut Street, what is the actual frontage of the lot?
113.
And I'm assuming that's a pre-existing lot?
Yes.
A existing lot.
And now with the rear lot line being changed and all, it doesn't make any difference as far as that frontage on that lot?
Not in A and R.
No. Because in A and R, I know, we usually look at frontage to make sure that the frontage is accurate.
And access.
Yeah, and I, that's, I know, that's another subject for, another topic for another day, but the frontage isn't changing, the original existing house has, still has more than a square footage by far. It doesn't make it any more non-conforming.
I would agree with that, I'm just touching all bases.
Yep, no, and I appreciate that, Ralph.
With that being said, I have nothing else.
Todd?
I have nothing else.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's wait for the end, and I'll sign them all, and we can get into your business.
That's it?
I don't think there's any more discussion.
Okay.
Um, I don't-
Just ask who made the motion.
George made the motion, I second.
Thank you.
All right, Ralph, you gentlemen got a chance to see what came through the email today, as far as the Muni system goes?
Yeah.
I've spoken with Angela, she's going to put a hold on it until we have a chance to talk through it amongst the different boards and/or department heads. So as of right now, from, again, what I'm told, this is not going to be implemented until the powers that be discuss it further.
I'm assuming they're putting a hold on that, she has talked to the IT department and told them not to make the changes?
I don't know that exactly I'm going to follow up with her, because I'd like to see an email saying that go out to department heads and/or board members, just so everybody's on the same page.
And what would she like from us?
She would like a letter describing why that this is not a good idea, why that, you know, the Muni system, we have the Muni system to prevent things like we just approved. It's a checks and balance system, we spent a lot of money, a lot of time, to make sure the town is taken care of from a financial point of view and a historical point of view, as far as, you know, accuracy and information. So if you take all the departments out of it, the paper trail and/or historical consistency will be lost. So I've asked Robin to write up a letter, which I'm sure she will do in a not-too-distant future, we can all review it, and then, you know, if everybody's in agreement with it, then we'll send that off to Angela, and I believe all the departments, the, all the other departments affected by this are going to do the same. And I believe it is going to be on their next agenda, and she was supposed to affirm that with me at a later date.
I, I endorse that, because among other things, I agree through this, and there's a lot of particular jargon related to the specific program in it that makes it difficult to understand.
Agreed.
And I think Robin, since she works for the program every day, is in the right position to point out the issues relative to planning and conservation as well, with the proposed changes, so.
Well, what worries me is if this is implemented, we're going to have more problems like this.
We are, I, I understand.
By the way, I, I agree it should not be implemented, but what's the purpose of implementing this? I mean, what's, what's the logical reason for making this change?
There isn't any.
There isn't any.
Well, then, if there's no logical reason for doing it-
Absolutely isn't any.
No comment.
Right. There's two people that just think they have all the answers and want to change completely how town government runs, without regard to the citizens whatsoever.
We spent all this money and time, and this has been in place for so many years, and now they just want to get rid of it just because of one incident, I mean, I think it's not-
It's not one instance, it's one person.
But this is all checks and balances-
Correct.
And now we're eliminating checks and balances, what's, it-
Things that we might miss or they might miss, these will cover it.
And I think that, that's a, that's a good point for Robin to make in the letter.
That's the whole, that's the whole thing, it's checks and balances from all departments.
I mean, the reason is to keep things from falling through the cracks.
Yes.
Right, well, it's 10 sets of eyes looking at everything instead of one.
Right.
All right, so-
I'm, I'm not in favor of taking it out.
I'm just curious, through the chair-
Certainly.
If this is implemented, if I read this correctly, we're not able to put special permits into the Muni system.
Can't put anything into the Muni system.
So-
No waivers, no site plan approvals, no special ones, nothing.
Well, it sounds like what we would have to do is contact the IT department to have anything put into the system. We would have to go through IT, we would have to request IT to put in a special permit that we just granted.
You'd pay some more work for them.
And they don't have the expertise on how to do that, not anything against them. I mean, this is something, you know, that we, we being the townspeople, went through a lot, we went through over a year and a half of implementing this with all departments, the accounting, the clerk, the assessors, the fire department, the police department, the building department, DPW, planning, zoning, conservation, and we had months and months of training for all of this, and it is, it's specifically checks and balances. It replaced the slip of paper that Tom DiMarzio used to have.
Right.
All the builders would have to come in, and they'd have to go to every department and get a signature that, okay, it's not against conservation, there's no, no restrictions from the planning board, anything like that. Excuse me.
Well, this, this-
And this is electronic, so.
I mean, it took years and hundreds of thousands of dollars for us to get here.
$300,000.
So to get rid of it-
I don't, I don't even understand the, the request, I mean, there's no reason for it.
Plus, I believe we have a yearly maintenance subscription and all to it.
Yes, we do.
And in essence, we would be going backwards 20 years.
How would this affect the planning board with regards to collecting fees for special permits and stuff like that?
We wouldn't know.
We can't put the permit in, and you don't know.
We don't know, we would have no idea.
No, because there would be no notification whatsoever of anything.
Pizza shop was a perfect example, we had no idea when anything was being done, because there was no permits. The whole building was completely renovated, with not, not so much as a permit, plan, nothing. And if that, if this is implemented, we'll have no idea.
Nobody will.
No, no kind of seeds, nobody.
Assessors won't be able to, to collect their taxes, DPW won't be able to approve curb cuts for cutting into the town roads, they won't be able to approve the water and sewer hookups, I mean, there's going to be no notification, nothing.
Someone coming in for a restaurant, they're still going to come into the planning board, they're still going to request a special permit.
Maybe.
Why, they don't have to.
They don't have to.
Well, simply because we don't have a computer system doesn't mean that that's not the law. The law in the book states that-
They won't unless they're told.
Yeah, but they won't unless there's, yeah, exactly.
If the access is cut off, nobody will know what's being done.
Why bother even coming up there?
Why have a planning board? I'm going to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, obviously, the form Muni's went in, discount function, so to simply say, taking a computer system out of it will completely destroy the town, no.
No.
It may revert back to everything on paper, which to me makes no sense whatsoever. I'm just trying to see what ramifications there would be going forwards. Is it going to affect, you know, income coming in as far as for the special permits?
Well, I think the major impact is going to be not-
It's complete pandemonium.
On the, the government per se, as it will be on the applicants. Because if someone is issued a permit that should not have been issued, then, first of all, the town's going to look stupid, and, and second of all, that person is at risk, that applicant is at risk, because they may be in violation of the law and not know it. And then somebody comes after them and says, well, you know, you put your foundation in the wrong place, or you put, put your fence the wrong way, and they go, well, I got a permit for it, you know, well, the permit was in error. And that could have been caught, had it been reviewed.
And doesn't that open up the town for future lawsuits, potentially?
Could.
Potentially, yeah.
I would think so.
And another thing for the town financially is the assessor's office, they use the notification system to keep track of the permits that were granted in order to collect supplemental taxes. It, it has an effect on the revenue of the town.
Yep.
And without notification, the assessor's office has no knowledge. Now, I'm going to, Michael had asked me to notify the other departments that this is what Angela would like, and they will all, you know, deal with their own issues, so Diane will address the supplemental revenue issues. But, I mean, it, the ramifications are, are huge.
Yeah, well, every time we grant a waiver for a, a business in a residential house, that goes to the assessors, and they have, that business then has to file a yearly return that says, you know, I've got $10,000 worth of computers that I use in my home office, and of course, they got to pay tax on that, because it's a business now, it's not personal.
And if the businesses, if the, if the Board of Selectmen and their wisdom choose to have a split tax rate this year, all of those businesses will be taxed for the portion of their home that they're in. So it's important that notifications are, are given, so that people know what businesses are where.
Okay, all right. Yep, so Robin will get the letter, we'll look at it, and then we'll move forward.
Okay.
All right, anything else for discussion tonight?
Yes. The release from covenant bond for Conview, you had approved it two weeks ago for $292,000. Mr. Chapdolane did more, because that was pretty high for him, and so this is a new release for $224,000.
Okay, DPW is looking-
DPW has approved it, given me that information, so they are now looking to have this, the covenant released in lieu of bond.
So additional work on the property's been completed.
That's what it sounds like.
Basically.
The sewer and water and the connections were done, so he's lowered it, he being given a warrant.
Is a pencil.
It's a pencil to Mike.
I'm looking to release the covenant based on the numbers here from DPW.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, what else do we have?
Minutes July 15. Minutes of July 15.
I just, let me, let's see if we got any more business, any, any members want to bring anything to the table before we get to the, the minutes?
Don't forget the appeal hearing.
Appeal hearing is September 8.
September 8.
All right, Ralph, did you want anything before we go to the minutes?
Say two weeks from today.
Just wanted to make sure, as far as the ZBA appeal, obviously, they've come in front of us, they've changed the plan, I think it's still important to have the ZBA confirm what their opinion of a rear lot line is.